We will start, as always, with the pledge of allegiance. I see Cynthia in the audience. Would you lead us in the pledge, please? I believe Councilman McGuire has a public announcement.
I do.
Mayor, I need to call roll.
Oh, mistake already.
Councilmember Ogerton, Councilmember Bunch, Councilmember Alkma, Councilmember McGuire,
President.
Councilmember Rhodes,
Here.
Vice Mayor Roy,
Here.
Mayor Morris.
President. Mike, ready?
I am too.
Okay.
We're pleased to report that all of the new people who are on the council attended a session workshop on Thursday and Friday of last week that had to do with the legal aspects, the responsibility, the structure of local government. We also had one other person there who delighted in talking about John Adams and Thomas Jefferson. And he's smiling. Bill Sims waxes eloquent when he gets to talk about the history of the United States and his pride.
Other announcements?
I have an announcement. While you were in new election, new officials, elected officials training, I was in Las Vegas at the annual Colorado River Water Users Association conference for the seven western states and the 22 Indian tribes that share the river water. It was a very interesting and somewhat explosive conference because you probably all know that we're under pretty dire circumstances on the Colorado. And so there were some discussions that were quite blunt about what has to be done to conserve more water among all of the states and the tribes. So it was an interesting and informative opportunity for me to attend this conference. I used to manage it as part of the program committee in my former work life. And so it was really good to be a customer, listening to all of the information from a completely different perspective. So I'm bringing that information back and I'm going to share it with the staff and see how Cave Creek can also accommodate what we need to do to save the river. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we're at call of the public.
I have no one wishing to speak.
Very good. Town manager report?
Mayor, members of council, we're going to save the 2022 year and review until the end of the meeting so we can go out on a bang with a positive report of everything that we've, well, not everything, but a lot of the things we've accomplished this year. But I did want to mention, I sent the mayor and council an email today. I wanted to publicly announce that there will be a lane closure this Thursday on Carefree Highway westbound to 53rd Street. We have a sewer blockage that we need to clear. And so that will be from about 9:00 AM until 1:00 PM this Thursday, the 22nd.
Thank you. On our consent agenda tonight, we have two items. The first one is the approval of the November 21st, 2022 regular council meeting minutes. The second is approval of a number 12 restaurant liquor license for cowboy pizza and brunch as requested by Jeffrey Craig Miller agent. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? The consent agenda passes. Now we're on the generalist agenda items. The council discussion and appointment of two citizens to fill the vacancies on the planning commission. The planning commission is very important in this town as it is in all towns. And it has its analogies to the town council in that the expertise for planning lies with staff, just as the expertise for the town government lies with staff. And the council is more policy. The planning commission makes a lot of decisions too, but they also rely on staff's expertise. And they are really responsible for making sure that the citizens' voices are heard, that the general plan is adhered to, and that we make good decisions for the good of all the people in Cave Creek. So we have six candidates for two positions. There are two positions that are to be filled, two very big shoes to fill. We lost Mr. Baxley and Mr. Forrest. Mr. Forrest was the chair. So we'll have a new chair in the upcoming session. And that chair will be voted upon by the committee. I have a distinguished group here and in, I'll call them and up to the podium, one at a time. They can say whatever they wish and then council will have the chance to question each person if they have questions. So first, Robert King. Mr. King here?
Mr. King is unavailable. He did submit a question or answers to questions that I forwarded to the council.
We, we just got these answers, so I apologize that we didn't get these reviewed ahead of time. I'm just going to read a few highlights here. Mr. King is a homeowner of Rancho Manana, has lived through Cave Creek since 2019, Arizona since 2004. He's voted since 2019. He's on the board of directors of Rancho Manana HOA, raised in Seattle, Washington. He has experience in civil engineering, master planning liaison between private and public entities, architecture and land use. Mr. Paul Ilkova is listed as a friend or acquaintance of his. He's attended that, he's been at least one planning commission meeting. He's attended several town council meetings. Seems to support the rural nature of town, a general plan. He says he is not an advocate of multi-family uses in Cave Creek or for large residential development projects. Our town needs to keep its western hometown feel. He looks forward to being a part of the planning commission and be involved for the town. What else? Anyone from council want to point anything else out about, or Mr. King?
I liked the second to the last paragraph. I am not interested in changing the direction of planning in Cave Creek. As a planning commissioner, my role would be to preserve the current town general plan and be careful to ensure our future lifestyle.
I'm a neighbor of Mr. King and his understanding, his understanding of the process to get things done. His gentle conversations with constituents have just been very impressive. So that's where my, my heart kind of lies. I've appreciated knowing him and working with him.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next candidate. Rick North, Mr. North here? Please.
Boy, I didn't prepare any remarks. I did submit my questionnaire. I was born and raised right here in, in Phoenix area. I went to school in Scottsdale, Coronado, Ohio, and then on ASU. Came here in Cave Creek as a, as a child. My grandparents had a house up on Morning Star towards the end of it. And they had that for a number of years and we used to visit them as a child. And I've had my current house in, in Cave Creek for 20 years. And I, I did move to Colorado for about 10 years during that time, but came back. I, I'm in the architectural sign business, had dealt a lot with codes and planning, use permit hearings and whatnot. I guess I'll open it up to questions.
I was just curious, in your view, what do you think is the role and the scope of authority for the plan commission?
It's an advisory board. So, you know, we'll hear things, make recommendations to, to council. And that's really about the scope of the planning commission.
Thank you.
Others? I have a question. What about the town would you change? Are you, are you, are you in favor of commercial development along Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road?
I think that's kind of inevitable. If there's, if it's commercially zoned, then the property owners have a right to develop it. I'm in favor of the rural, you know, kind of lifestyle that we've all come to enjoy here. You know, the horse has been kind of let out of the barn as far as commercial development. And Phoenix is gonna, you know, develop a lot of that as well. So, you know, I just think that we should go for quality over, over quantity.
Have you ever been in a position where you had a lot of controversy? At times our planning commission does that. Can you handle that?
It, yeah, I just, you know, various cases, variance cases and whatnot in sign business. It's kind of goes with the territory.
So you've been in front of planning commissions and town councils and things like that. You know how, how the system works?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions?
Cynthia Driscoll, were you the person who suggested that Mr. North apply?
We've talked about it, yes, as neighbors.
Okay. Would you, would you like to say anything on his behalf? No? I'd like you to.
Hi, I'm Cynthia Driscoll. I'm currently on the planning commission. I live on 70th Street and Mr. North lives on 72nd Street. He's been a friend of my husband for a number of years, but also we've been acquainted with discussing issues in Cave Creek development and the need to maintain harmony in neighborhoods as well as to look to the future for what Cave Creek's needs are in terms of commercial development and revenue streams. So I found my conversations with Rick to be open and enlightening. And I think he has a lot to bring to the commission with his background in working with signs and Coney ordinances. I recall a couple of years ago, the council had some pretty lively discussions about the sign ordinance requirements that came about from Supreme Court cases and other jurisdictions. So that issue certainly will be one we'll probably have to revisit at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Next in alphabetical order is John Patton, who is not here tonight. I do not see him in the audience. He answered questions. He is, he was on the planning commission previously for three years, originally from Michigan. Arbitration advisor and Northern University, university, history and political science teaching. Looking for highlights here. He believes that the general plan represents the desires of the residents. That looks like the highlights. So that's Mr. John Patton. He is our third candidate. Would you like to say anything about Mr. Patton?
I've known John for a number of years. He highly values Cave Creek and I thought he did very well in his service with the planning commission.
Thank you. Others? Okay, we'll move on to David Smith. Mr. Smith.
Probably many people who are sitting up on the dais know who I am and they know my background. My wife and I bought in 2002, moved from the east to here because this is where I wanted to be. And shortly thereafter, I went to town hall and I said to the then-town manager, I'd like to be involved in things. So for the past 13, 14 years, I've been involved in the succession of volunteer activities for the town of Cave Creek. Most recently, I was on the town council for six years. Prior to that, I was the chairman of the planning commission and before that, a member of the planning commission, about budget committee, I've been on the water advisory committee. I have a concern about quite a few things to do with what the planning commission's involved in. There are some things that I, I think that the planning commission needs to be involved in that are coming along in the future. We've got a pre-annexation, annexation agreements that can either be a boon or a place for great harm to the town depending upon how they're handled. That comes up in five years so that we have to make a decision sometime prior to that on what we're going to do. Everybody has gotten, I assume, my application and then my answers to the questions that were presented. If anybody has any questions in addition to that, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions? Do you favor commercial development along Carefree Highway and Cave Creek Road?
Gee, I know, I know something about that. I was, I was one of the many parents of the specific area plan. And it, it was put in place because the previous councils had made decisions. Part of it is a result of the white paper that was done when the Great Recession took place that said the town needs money and here's a place to get it. And that was aimed towards making that commercial. There was some belief that it didn't need to be 100% heavy duty commercial, that there were better ways to do things. A group of people, including council member Alkma and I, met with town staff and various political individuals at that time and came away with essentially an agreement that light commercial would be what would be appropriate for that area. And what that means is commercial is acceptable, but it has to be in a way which will be less intrusive on the neighbors who live to the north of that and for people who are driving in from the west on Carefree Highway. That, and I think that we're, the previous council, and I'm sure this one will be dealing with what's left of the vacant space on Carefree Highway and what, Area 18? I don't think there's much left in 10. And who knows what will happen with the southeast corner? If anything ever happens to the southeast corner of Cave Creek and Carefree Highway. Anything else?
Other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Mr. Ron Sob, would you care to step to the podium, please?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Town Manager, Town Attorney. Ron Sova of Cave Creek Town Corps resident and voter for over 10 years. Plus, I've also lived in Arizona before in the 80s for about five years before moving back to Chicago during one of our many recessions. My past has been quite lengthy, so I'll limit it to three minutes here. I served for two terms on the Cave Creek Town Council with several of you in recent years. I've also served one term on the plan commission and one term on the water advisory commission. I also was in the military. I was a plane captain on an EA3B Sky Warrior on assignments throughout the world. And I was based out of Turkey and Spain. Just a little something I'm quite proud of having done in the past. I'm also a current member of the American Legion Post 34, right here in Cave Creek for the last 10 years. I attended the University of Illinois and Illinois Institute of Technology under the GI Bill, studying architectural engineering. I have worked for just about 40 years in the residential building, land development and property management business, as well as having my own consulting company regarding those same disciplines. I've worked with many cities, towns, counties, state and federal agencies regarding annexations, planning, platting, engineering, engineering and zoning issues throughout the United States in my career. I've worked for many large national builders and small privately owned residential builders, as well as having my own companies, presenting cases before plan commissions, zoning boards, town councils, county supervisors. I've worked with planning directors, engineers, attorneys, building departments, and most importantly, politicians throughout my 40-year career. I believe that our town core be maintained as it's currently utilized with smaller mom and pop businesses reflecting our eclectic rural lifestyle while supporting larger businesses in our Cave Creek Carefree Highway corridors. Both are extremely important to our town in maintaining and more importantly, increasing hopefully our 3% sales tax base. Because as more and more electric vehicles are on the road and less people perhaps go to the office, we receive less tax money through the Huff Fund, funding, Herb Funding, if I stand corrected, highway users tax. So it's very important to maintain and increase our tax revenue given the fact our town does not have, as you're well aware, a property tax and would take a referendum and a vote from our residents to do so. Also, I think that our land or our low-density residential should be maintained, pursuant to our general plan, except for parcels having pre-existing established granted zoning and water rights. Additionally, all developments should be reviewed, paying close attention to the potential water demand in light of our current drought and committed current water demands of properties not yet developed within our town. We could also look at the few remaining parcels on Carefree Highway as they relate to residential and commercial uses as compared to our general plan. Our town does not have very many opportunities for commercial zoning anymore. And so it's of prime importance to concentrate on those corridors regarding commercial zoning because it won't be long before Cave, I'm sorry, Cave, yeah, Carefree, as their water line completed up to the corner of Cave Creek Road and Carefree Highway, in which case though, I'm sure you'll see commercial going up fairly soon, which will be a great revenue producer for their town, but also those, they'll be in competition with us in our commercial properties. So it's important we stay ahead of that and try to get the most benefit out of that that we can because there's not that many parcels left. For the most part, following our current ordinances, codes, policies and applicable laws, we'll keep our town on a solid footing for the future. And as far as residential properties go, I think as long as we adhere to our general plan and the codes and ordinances, we'll be fine. I believe my background and experience provides me with a solid and clear understanding of property rights, which is very important. The applicant submissions and their requests coming to our town and most importantly, the residents' concerns over the potential development of that property within our town. And as long as they adhere to the laws of the land while maintaining the character of our eclectic community, I think we'll be fine. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ron, what do you think has worked best with the plan commission? And then conversely, how do you think it can be improved?
I think the plan commission is a key element to provide clear, concise, accurate information to the town council. I think that information should be vetted through the public hearings that are held with the residents. The questions that the plan commission asks, and more importantly, the amount of reading and research a plan commission member does to make sure he or she asks the right question in order to get the best information and again, in a clear and concise fashion to move on to the town council to make your job easier whereby you can devote more time to your other issues and have this at least in front of you with a good recommendation that's solid and clear and understandable from the plan commission.
And then the second half of that question, how could the current plan commission improve its performance?
Well, by voting me on it.
That would be us.
No, no, I think, I think with Bob Forrest, having been chairman of that for years with Mr. Beckner as vice chairman, have done an excellent job. And I think quite candidly, all kidding aside, over the last few years, as a council member, working with several of you and choosing other council, other plan commission members, we've done a good job to see that we have good people to ferret this information and get it to the town council.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Sob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Charlie Spitzer, your turn.
My name's Charlie Spitzer. I've been a resident of Arizona since about 1980. I've risen to Cave Creek since 2000. Whilst I haven't been on the planning commission, I've spoken to you for them many times on behalf of various neighborhoods to have asked me to speak for them on, on topics before the planning commission and the town council. While I was running, I was on, I was on the town council for one session. While I was running for that, I basically walked through every neighborhood in Cave Creek and talked to literally hundreds and hundreds of people. So I have a very good idea of the things that they think impact them. A couple who may recall, while I was on town council, I brought forth a resolution to have changes in the planning code such that houses would have been required or strongly encouraged to have pre-wiring for solar and for water, gray water and rainwater capture. That was voted down. I think in terms of our drought, that was a very bad decision at that time. We, the town and those homeowners would have been in much better places now, today, if that had been passed. One of the things I see that the plan commission doesn't do is they don't do a whole lot of proactive things. They're pretty reactive. And I would like to see the, the plan commission be more proactive in, in thinking what's going to happen in the next 10, 20 years and passing things now that would help things be better in the future. I've answered a bunch of questions on the questionnaire, so if you have any further questions?
So Charlie, you were alluding to more green building. And I just noticed today that Scottsdale has recently approved itself to become a green building community. So how do you think that? So how do you think that we could manage to get that approved at some point in Cave Creek?
I think the, the town building code has to be changed to do that. I was just reading two or three days ago, Japan just made for the entire country, every new house must be wired for solar. I think that I, I don't know of any places in, in Arizona, let alone the United States who have done that. I think if we had passed that 10 years ago, we would have been far ahead of the plan.
Other questions?
Well, I have one. Charlie, um, about the general plan. Which parts of that do you really like? Which parts do you have passion for?
The general plan documents what it, it, it's a description done by hundreds of people. I think it's, it's very large. It's very bloated. I think there are pieces of that which are they don't describe a plan. They describe what is, what we would like to have, but it doesn't describe a plan for how to get there. The pieces of it that I like, the, the general description of, of our, our our lifestyle, the Western lifestyle, the rural, low-density lifestyle is the, the piece of it that I like, the dis, the general description, but I think in a lot of places it's much too bloated.
Thank you.
So Charlie, um, are you in favor of architectural slash design guidelines for the Plan Commission to follow?
Can you define where you mean that by?
Well, no, it's open-ended at this point. It's just under discussion. People have brought that concept forward that perhaps it's needed. Um, I'm just curious as to your opinion.
Not really, no. We have new houses going up on schoolhouse that are, you know, look like they could be on the California coast. They're very ultra-modern. And we have the Western lifestyle. We still have houses from the 50s that have the design eclectic. So for residential, no, I, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of the, the rules that we have for what kind of plants you can put in so that we don't propagate these, these things that don't belong in the desert that tend to take over. And I don't have a I, I don't believe that businesses should either have a, a design plan or design enforcement of what they should look like, I think. For the most part, most buildings have come out looking like they're, they're eclectic and, and fit in to almost anywhere in, in town. So it's, they're all different. The places that I, I see builders, I would like to recommend that builders develop something that more fits in rather than the buildings like the, the, the pet hotel on Carefree Highway looks like a, a generic box. Think, things of that nature. I like that we could encourage them to do something different. But generally they don't do that because it costs too much. So I, I don't think it can be enforced. I don't, I don't wish it to be enforced. I think it should be encouraged.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Um, I was saying question about what do you think about commercial development on Carefree Highway and the commercial uh, areas of Cave Creek Road?
I was on town council and voted for putting in the special area plan. I was also on town council that, that approved the, the rezoning for the, the place behind Lowe's. So.
The, uh, the houses?
They're, they're, at that time, there was a development of, of a small apartment house.
The merit, it used to be called merit. It's not true.
It never came out, but I, I voted for that also.
Okay. Thank you. Cam, it opened up for public comment. Anybody in the public would like to, uh, comment on the candidates?
We have Mark Betker.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Town Council. Uh, I just want to take this opportunity to, uh, encourage you to think hard about who are you going to put on the Planning Commission? Having gone in front of the Planning Commission numerous times, um, numerous decisions have been made that have, uh, been in violation of the general plan mission and values. And it's proven over and over and over again. So when we go forward, the people you need to, to thank of are those that will actually follow our general plan, follow what the people of this community want and desire. Um, I would look for change. I would look for new blood. It's great that, uh, some individuals want to continue to serve, uh, this community, but it's also time to give that opportunity to, uh, new members of the community to serve this organization. So I appreciate the time to talk to you, but I hope you, you think, uh, long and hard about who we put on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no additional speakers.
Okay, now comes the fun part. I'd, I'd propose using the same method we used, uh, the last time, uh, for, for a very good reason. That method is that each person on council has a little ballot with everyone's name on it. And this would essentially be a nomination process and then the, uh, it, it's a public vote. So we would vote here, give the ballots to the clerk, then the clerk would read them out. So you'd know how each council member voted. And then I would ask for a motion of the top vote getter to see if we could carry, if that person could carry a vote and thereby be appointed uh, as a planning commissioner. Uh, now why are we doing this? The Roberts Rules has a way to elect people and we've done that in the past, but we've really, really left a lot of candidates with the feeling that they weren't considered. This method gives, puts everybody's name in front of council and everybody has a chance to get a vote. So you're, if you are a candidate, uh, you will get a vote to see if you can move to that next step of the nomination. Um, once you have the nomination, uh, we'll vote, ask for a motion. It will be a voice vote. Um, no, it'll be roll call vote, excuse me. It'll be roll call vote. So if, are there any objections from council to using that method? Okay, let's proceed. So at this point I'd ask each person on council to take one of these pieces of paper and vote for your top candidate.
Just one.
Just one, please.
Councilmember Allerton, Charlie Spitzer. Councilmember McWire, Ron Silva. Councilmember Elkma, Robert King. Councilmember Bunch, Ron Silva. Vice Mayor Ray, Rick North. Councilmember Rhodes, Robert King. Mayor Morris, David Smith. We have two for Robert King, one for Rick North, one for Davis Smith, two for Ron Silva and one for Charlie Spitzer.
Okay, so we, we have two people tied with, uh, for the top vote. So I'll ask then for a motion on, uh, I guess alphabetical order again, as you say, it was King, Sullivan King, right? At the two votes? Or Sullivan?
It was Robert King had two votes and Ron Silva had two votes.
Okay, so I will ask for a motion on, uh, Mr. King. Presumably you can get a motion in a second.
What are you talking about?
A, a motion to appoint Mr. King to the.
Don't they need four votes?
Well, that's what, that's, but the, this nomination is not a vote. It's just to get somebody moving the forward. Now we need a motion, a second and a vote to actually put someone on, on the planning commission.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Robert King.
Waiting for a second.
Second.
Okay, roll call roll, please.
Councilmember Allerton.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, just a clarification. Uh, is this a vote for appointment to the commission or is this a vote for a poll of people to pick?
No, this is, this is the actual vote for who's going to be on the commission. So this is, this is the money.
When I vote determines that this will be the choice depending on the plurality on the council.
Yeah, i- i- if Mr. King gets four votes, he's on the commission.
Okay, I bet I.
Councilmember Bunch?
No.
Councilmember Elkma?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
No.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ray? No. Mayor Morris?
No. So Mr. King fails to be appointed and we are looking for a motion for Mr. Silva. Motion to appoint Mr. Silva.
Second.
The roll, please. This again, if Mr. Silva gets four votes, he is on the commission.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Elkma?
No.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
No.
Vice Mayor Ray? No. Councilmember Allerton?
No.
Mayor Morris?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Silva is, is not appointed. So we are, uh, as I look here, I guess everyone else got one vote.
Correct.
Um, did anybody not get votes in that first round?
Um, Mr. Patton did not get a vote.
Okay, um, if there's no objection, we'll, uh, we'll leave Mr. Patton for last since he didn't. But if you will, please take your second ballot. And we'll repeat the same process for, to nominate, see if we can get a nomination for a, uh, still looking for the first appointee. But now, uh, we should, uh, I'd ask that you don't vote for Mr. Silva. Or Mr. Mr. King, since they failed.
You know, I, I note that Mr. Silva in our first vote got among the greatest number of votes.
You know, you're right. I, I think vote for whoever you'd like. Yeah, I think that's a good point.
And if someone got no votes on the first, I, I don't see that that person would move on. I think the eliminating a person should be based on the fact that we've already voted and expressed some opinion. And, uh, Mr. Silva got more votes than anyone else and therefore I'd suggest that he not be eliminated.
Okay, let's, let's put that in the form of motion. So your motion is?
My motion is to eliminate only those who got the, uh, who did not get votes on the first ballot.
That'd be Mr. Patton. So vote for everybody except Mr. Patton. Okay.
Do we need a second?
This is, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we do. We need a second for that. Second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. So we're voting now with five candidates. Mr. Patton is eliminated and we are now voted for the people who got votes.
Shouldn't we vote for two of them?
Yeah, uh, no, we're, we're doing one at a time.
Mr. Silva is placed, so we have one left.
No, three. He only got three votes.
Who, Silva?
Two, two votes.
No, Mr. Silva got three.
Oh, as far as the motion, yes, yeah. But you, you can vote for him to get, you can nominate him to get.
And he is nominated, uh, because we've only eliminated one individual.
Yeah. So now we have five people on the, on the list and we are voting for one person, ex-Mr. Patton.
Mr. Mayor, who are the five people on the list?
Everybody but Patton.
So we've changed the procedure from the beginning?
Well, we voted, we vote, we just voted on this, on this and it was carried. So that, that's the procedure unless you want to reconsider.
No, no, I'm just trying to really figure out what's going on. Uh, when you set out the ground rules this evening, you were looking for anybody who registered and I vote. And we have that, but you did a second vote on the persons who had the I votes. And I asked you, are these permanent now to the commission? So you said yes. And initially, am I dense here? I mean, initially I thought it was a vetting process and then we had the final pool from which to check. Are you saying now the five, who are the five we're choosing from?
It's the five ex-Mr. Patton as we just, uh,
Right, I just.
We just had a vote and we just passed that motion.
Could somebody just tell me the five people that we're considering?
King, North, Smith, Silva and Spitzer.
How did Silva get back in the mix?
Yeah, so bizarre.
We had two votes and, and we, we just eliminated and we just voted on the motion to eliminate the person who didn't get votes at the first time.
I thought the McGuire motion was that maybe I'm just, I know I'm new and maybe I'm slow tonight, but I don't know how we got people back on the list after we did the initial day. Well, it doesn't matter. So just tell me, so the five are where we're choosing currently?
Yes, okay. This is, you're not choosing the commissioner, you're, you're, we're trying to get to somebody that we can nominate and then make a motion.
So we're not choosing the final.
It takes four votes and a motion and four votes to be appointed as a commissioner. This is a preliminary to try to organize it so that all the candidates have a fair shot at being nominated, uh, through the motion process.
Okay.
All the votes cast?
Councilmember McGuire, Ron Silva. Councilmember Elkma, Robert King. Councilmember Allerton, Charlie Spitzer. Mayor Morris, David Smith. Vice Mayor Ray, Charlie Spitzer. Councilmember Rhodes, Robert King. Councilmember Bunch, Ron Silva. There are no votes for Rick North or John Patton. Robert King received two votes, David Smith, one vote, Ron Silva, two votes and Charlie Spitzer, two votes.
So we have three tied with two?
Yes.
So I, I would look for a motion to eliminate the people that, uh, so we just continue with, with the three candidates that had two votes.
And, and my motion then is to do as you suggested that those who did not receive votes not participate in the next round.
So you, uh, which would be whom?
Oh, I apologize. Uh, Rick North did not receive votes.
Okay.
And then David Smith received one vote.
So you want to put that in form of a motion again?
Yes, my motion is that candidates, uh, could be eliminated by not receiving any votes in one of the, uh, in, in an election in which they take place.
Is there a second? Sure. So the, the motion on the table then is to eliminate one more person and that would be Mr. North. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
All right, so now we're down to, uh, four candidates, King, Silva and, uh, and Smith. So I'm looking for a motion. Well, let's, let's vote again.
Yep.
So who's on the list this time? Uh, King, Silva?
Smith and, and Spitzer.
Spitzer.
Spitzer, yeah, excuse me, switcher.
We have the four candidates.
To the audience, we have a whole stack of ballots.
Councilmember McGuire, Ron Silva. Councilmember Allerton, Charlie Spitzer. Councilmember Bunch, Ron Silva. Councilmember Rhodes, Robert King. Mayor Morris, Ron Silva. Vice Mayor Ray, Charlie Spitzer. Councilmember Elkma, Robert King. We have two votes for Robert King. Uh, no votes for David Smith, three votes for Ron Silva, and two votes for Charlie Spitzer.
Okay, I would ask for a motion, uh, of Mr. Mr. Silva to be appointed to, this is a motion to appoint uh, Ron Silva as a planning commissioner, one planning commissioner.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please, Theresa.
Councilmember Elka?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ray?
Yes.
Councilmember Orton?
No.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Yes.
That is six to one.
Okay, Ron Silva is hereby appointed to the planning commission. Congratulations, Ron. Feel like I'm in a jury room. Yeah.
Or or perhaps a soccer match between Argentina and France.
So we have, we have two candidates left, Mr. King and Mr. Spitzer. Do I have a nomination for one of those two people?
I'd like to nominate Charlie Spitzer.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Spitzer has been nominated in a second, so we're looking for a roll call vote. Theresa, Mr. Spitzer.
Councilmember McGuire?
Okay, I need to understand this. We have, I thought we had appointed two people already that because Mr. Silva got, uh, six out of seven votes, I thought.
Yes, who's the other one?
Oh, so you're suggesting that we would vote, uh, again?
Yeah, there has, there has to be a motion, a second, and a vote of four people to be on the planning commission. Silva is the little one so far who's gotten it. So now we're looking, we just had a we just had a motion for Charlie Spitzer. Uh, did I hear a second?
Yes.
We had a second, so that is a motion on the floor right now. Roll, please.
Uh, Councilmember McGuire?
No.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ray?
Yes.
Councilmember Orton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bunch?
No.
Councilmember Elka?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Yes.
That passes five to two.
Mr. Spitzer, you're on the planning commission, five to two. Congratulations. And after that painful experience, we'll try to I'd be interested if anybody has, uh, some, uh, other thoughts on how we can do that. So we now have two members on the planning commission. The next item on the agenda is a council presentation acceptance of the town of Cave Creek annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, placed on the agenda by the finance director.
Mr. Mayor, uh, members of council, I'd just like to introduce our new finance director, Mitzi Callow, who will be uh, making introductions about the act for, as it's now called. Used to be a caffer. Ready, those have been around a long time and now it's an act for.
Okay. Okay, right, so we got more votes. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Member of Council, um, nice to meet you officially. Um, I would like to introduce, uh, Mr. Brian Hemmerly. He is a partner with Baker Tilly, formerly Henry and Horn, the town's auditing firm. Tonight, Mr. Hemmerly will be presenting the audit results of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two annual comprehensive financial report that act for, and the annual expenditure limitation report, also known as the E L R, and highlight the town's fiscal year twenty twenty-two financial results for your acceptance.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me okay? I think it's working. Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, again, my name is Brian Hemmerly. I'm the lead audit partner for the town of Cave Creeks, June thirty, twenty twenty-two annual comprehensive financial report. I've got a brief presentation for you. Let's see if we can get, there we go. Okay, so this, uh, is an audit that is required by state statute. It is not, um, the audit doesn't really go beyond what the statute requires as far as the financial statements are concerned. We give a reasonable opinion that the financial statements are materially correct. We do not provide an absolute opinion and absolute assurance over those financial statements. The reason being is to provide absolute assurance, we'd have to test every transaction at the town. Uh, the reasonable assurance that's provided is based on statistical sampling, internal control test work, walkthroughs, observations. And of course, we do sample, uh, all kinds of expenses, revenues, receding, um, and then all your balance sheet items as well. This year, we did not find any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that we need to report to council or management, so no findings. You did receive a, uh, clean opinion on your financial statements this year. So the financial statements did did not have any material inconsistencies or incorrect financial accounting in relation to GAAP or what we consider government accounting standards. Some significant accounting policies and issues that we have to discuss with council. Uh, we did not have any account, we did not encounter any difficulties in performing our audit this year. There were no uncorrected misstatements. Uh, there was no disagreements with management. We're not aware of any audit, audit shopping, which is something you would do only if you received the bad opinion and you wanted to find an auditor who'd give you a clean opinion. Um, so that wouldn't be necessary. And we had no recommendations or findings that needed to come up to the written reports this year. We did have one verbal recommendation related to, uh, software that is a subscription-based IT arrangement. Next year, there is a government accounting standard that's coming out that will require us to capitalize that software if it is a subscription-based IT arrangement. And we found that the town needed to begin inventorying those software subscription IT arrangements so that we can implement that with them in the next year. The other report that we issued is your expenditure limitation report. This is required by the auditor general's offices to make sure that you do not exceed the expenditures, uh, limitation that you have during the year. Your voter-approved expenditure limitation this year was forty million dollars. Uh, according to our calculations, the expenditures that were subject to that limitation were thirty-three point nine million. So you were well under the limitation by six million dollars this year. And that has been, um, submitted by us and, uh, sent to the auditor general's office of the state of Arizona. There was no single audit this year. A single audit is an audit that the federal government requires whenever you spend more than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of federal funding. You will, however, have a federal single audit next year for your American Recovery Plan Act funding that you received for the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. So, um, there is some highly restrictive uses on those funds and management is aware of that. We've, um, consulted with them as far as the what they plan to use that money for, what the town plans to use the money for, or is currently using the money for, and we will be auditing that in the next audit cycle. Some really high-level financial information here for you. This is a look at your balance sheet essentially, assets, liabilities, equity net position, uh, and then your revenues and expenses. The green is this year, the gray was last year. You can see assets are up, liabilities are down, all positive trends. Equity is up, revenues are flat, expenses are up just a tad, overall for the entire government-wide statements in millions of dollars. The fund balances, these are equity by type of fund. So the gray is all your funds. The green is just your general fund. And then the proprietary funds are your water, desert hills, cave creek, and then your wastewater as well, which is separate from your gray, um, gray bar graph there.
So, yeah, as a question.
Yes, sir.
There there's one number that sticks out like a sore thumb, and that is the proprietary funds went from twenty-one million to thirty-nine million fund balance.
Yes, sir. So my understanding is the, uh, there was a rate study, maybe incorrect in that, thinking that the revenues were up quite a bit this year in relation to the expenses.
Your microphone's not on.
Yeah, yeah, I'll have to take another look at why the proprietary funds are up this year. I do remember in the past years, there was a large transfer to write off some advances between the governmental funds and the enterprise funds for some outstanding debt that was there between the the funds. That, of course, isn't going to impact this year because it came off the balance sheet last year. So all those expenses, uh, will not have occurred in the twenty twenty-two year. And so they aren't there to offset the revenues that you would have had that would fall to equity at the end of the year.
If you will, this is a town staff. I'd like to see an explanation of what's going on there.
So that's the high-level information I have for you. Uh, if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I, just one question. Does the, does the state or anybody put out, uh, areas of emphasis uh, for these, uh, the statutory regulatory audits?
Areas of emphasis regarding current risks or trends?
I'm going back to my corporate experience where every year there were areas of emphasis, but I guess that there's not, since you don't know what that is, but.
Well, the auditor general's office does submit annually to all auditors across the state, um, certain risks that we should be familiar with during the year. Um, recently, the most common ones are cybersecurity risks. There have been a number of municipalities that have fallen prey to, um, ransomware and, uh, such that the FBI has had to come in and take down their servers and they don't have access to them for a number of weeks. Um, so we do look to make sure that your IT information and your backups are current, that they're tested, that they are, um, ready to be used. If you do become prey to a cyber attack and you have to eliminate a number of days worth of data that have been input into your accounting systems, um, but those backups should be properly ready for use so that you can continue processing payroll, paying your vendors, um, things of that nature. But we do not provide an IT audit. Uh, we are just the financial statement audit. If you wanted to make sure a hundred percent certainty that your IT systems are in good shape, then you would have to, you'd want to find a cybersecurity expert to do that work. That that's what the risk were this year. Yes, sir.
Other questions? So I guess, uh, then we are looking for a motion to accept this report, item number two here.
I move to accept the town of Cave Creek annual comprehensive financial report, A C F R for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we accept. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council discussion, possible approval, authorizing the mayor to execute a grant-in-aid agreement between the Tohono O'odham O'odham Nation and the town of Cave Creek, placed on the unit by the town manager. Uh, before we move on, though, excuse me, I'm sorry. It didn't have public comment on there, but I, it's gonna be my policy to have public comment wherever it's reasonable. So is there any public comment on the financial report? Seeing none, we'll move on to the granted aid agreement.
Mr. Mayor, uh, members of council, this is a request from the Scott Foundation, um, basically to, uh, pass through grant funds from the Tohono O'odham Nation in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars through the town of Cave Creek, um, to the Scott Foundation for the purpose of purchasing two vehicles. Um, the foundation, um, is, uh, has a town of Cave Creek, uh, post office box and, um, is at, and there's a process through which they have to apply through a government agency. And because they had a Cave Creek address, they thought that this would come through the town of Cave Creek. However, in researching, the community that they serve does include the town of Cave Creek, um, North Scottsdale Carefree and Unincorporated, um, Maricopa County. And they have two trucks sitting at, uh, Avondale Toyota, um, that we wouldn't want them to loo- to lose because they would be sold basically if if the funds are not provided to them. So we worked with the Tohono O'odham, uh, nation and their attorney to get this agreement in satisfaction with the town's attorney. The nation only provides funds to state uh, county and local governments as a pass-through. And this is very similar to a process with lottery funds that the town, uh, passes through our, our grant funds onto the caring corps. So in order to help them out, we put this on the agenda for the council approval of the agreement to authorize the mayor to sign that. We would send that back to the attorney for the, um, nation and we will receive the one hundred thousand dollars, um, if their grant funds and pass that through to the Scott Foundation so that they could purchase the trucks that are already on the lot, ready to take those foster children to wherever they need to go, school or their other functions. So I just hate to have a nonprofit organization lose out on grant funds because of technicality. Normally, we would have, um, an arrangement in our budget and put those funds in there or or know about this before they applied. And it it just didn't happen, but I didn't want to penalize anybody for that. And, um, Colleen is here. If you have any questions for her from the Scott Foundation. All the legal mumbo jumbo is actually in your report, explains how we're allowed to do this by law. And the agreement is attached and it does designate that they have received the grant for the one hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, or Colleen could could answer any questions.
Questions? Rusty?
Are we gonna put a, uh, line item or something in the budget in future years if things like this come up?
Uh, Mayor, council member, we actually have a line item in the budget. We have identified specific grants, but we always include the revenue and expenditure for any pro- grants that we might not know of to apply for at the beginning of the budget. So we do have those funds um, in terms of expenditure authority, which is what we just talked about in the prior, um, item on the agenda. You have to have the expenditure authority, um, for the grant, and we do have that in this current budget, both revenue and the expenditure side.
I guess I want to clarify, we're gonna have that going forward also, correct?
Um, my understanding and 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 Colleen could, um, clarify this. They will be moving to a permanent facility, uh, but it's near Seven Springs. Technically, that is, um, unincorporated Maricopa County. So if there are other grants that they apply for that are similar to this that need to be run through a government agency, they would be able to do that through Maricopa County. So either it's all state, county, and local government.
Mr. McGuire?
Is there a fee associated with this where the the Native Americans or the Scott Foundation must pay for our service?
Uh, Mayor, uh, Councilman McGuire, no, there's no fee. It's simply a pass-through. Um, they have funds through the, the nation that they're required to give to nonprofit organizations, just like the lottery funds at the state. They, um, give a certain percentage to, um, nonprofits. And this is very similar to what we have been doing with the caring corps. So there's no fee.
Thank you.
Seeing no questions, I'm ready for a motion.
Got one if you're ready.
Please.
Ah, let's see here. Motion to approve authorizing the mayor to execute a grant-in-aid agreement between the town and the Tohono Toh- oh, oh, oh my gosh, I've never been able to say it, Tohono O'odham Nation, and pass the grant funds through to the town of Cave Creek to the Scott Foundation so they receive one hundred thousand dollar grant funds.
Comments?
Uh, it, you know, we just kind of, the only, only effect it's gonna have on us is is utilizing a hundred thousand of our, uh, of our budget and the grant stuff, which wouldn't be available to us down the road. But that's not a big deal because we usually apply for more than, or put more in there than we need. So it's just, it's just the right thing to do for for five oh one Z three.
I heard Councilman Elka with a second.
And, uh, just to repeat what Ernie said, um, it's a great thing to be doing. If we can help it, we should do it.
Other comments from council?
Concur.
Uh, this is financial, so we will have a roll call.
Vice Mayor Ray?
Yes.
Councilmember Orton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Elka?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Morris?
Yes. Motion passes, seven zero. So we are.
Congratulations.
Was there ever any doubt? Council presentation of Town Core Traffic and Pedestrian Safety Update. Mr. Howell, Mayor, Town Engineer and Luke Kautzman, Development Services Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So tonight Hal and I are here to give council and the public an update regarding Town Core Traffic and Pedestrian Safety. Just as a little bit of background, the right of way within the Town Core has changed significantly, beginning in the 90s when landscape medians were installed. If anyone was around here during that time, like I was, you remember the the suicide lane that went down the middle of Cave Creek Road all the way through town. And my wife was actually in the ecology club that helped put landscaping in those medians. So a little shameless plug to my wife. The with the adoption of the Town Core and Implementation Program in 2000, the implementation component was essentially a capital improvement program and included projects such as a roundabout at Schoolhouse Road, acquiring land for public parking, streetscape, street lighting, as well as the acquisition of right of way design and improvement of emergency access north and south of Cave Creek Road. Other suggestions that have been explored include reducing Cave Creek Road to one lane each direction at certain blocks to accommodate on street parking. A roundabout at Rancho Mianana Boulevard has also been discussed. Then the signalization of the intersection of Schoolhouse Road and Cave Creek has also been brought up at various times in the town's history. Since that time, the town has partnered with Maricopa Association of Governments to fund additional studies and feasibilities specific to safe modes of travel through the Town Core. The town also submitted several grant application during the 2000s, which were not funded, but would have further added pedestrian or aided in pedestrian accommodations. After 2008, the town acquired the property adjacent to the Neri Water Storage Tank located just south of Cave Creek Road on Hidden Valley Drive for the purposes of public parking. That property is approximately an acre and and one of the best kept secrets in town as far as a place to park and and get around town pretty easily on foot. In 2012, the town adopted the current Town Core Plan, which incorporates goals related to circulation pathways and parking. A component of that plan expressed the need to develop a transportation plan to address, among other things, emergency access issues and multimodal transportation needs. Two years later, in 2014, the transportation study was prepared by Michael Baker International and paid for in large part by MAG and co endorsed by Cave Creek and get this Carefree. We both agreed and accepted that that study. And ultimately, the improvements that were implemented following the recommendations in the 2014 study. And once again, I'll note that that study was a culmination of a little over a year of multiple stakeholder meetings and facilitation of public input by Michael Baker International. And if you're familiar with Michael Baker International, they were the the chief proponent in getting the general plan that we have currently adopted today through the public process. So a lot of a lot of input went into that 2014 study. Some of the things that came out of that were the narrowing of travel lanes, reduction in the posted speed limit through town, additional crosswalk locations, as well as bike lanes. These improvements were ultimately paid through grants with little cost to Cave Creek. The town continues to implement the goals outlined in the Town Core Plan as they relate to circulation pathways and parking. Unlike a master planned community where all improvements related to street sidewalks, public parking and landscaping are completed before homes are built and businesses are established. Cave Creek is is typically forced to retrofit existing development and improvements within varying widths of right of way where additional easement is absolutely necessary in order to install pedestrian means of travel. So that's a mouthful there, but really what that means is we in 1986, when we incorporated, we kind of got what we got as far as right of way goes. And we've been trying to work with property owners to obtain additional easement and put in those pedestrian and safe connections and pathways where appropriate. The process is slow moving and and to the public may appear to be piecemeal as only several hundred feet are constructed at any one time. And the reason for that is prior to 2019, the staff's objective was to wait to build out our pathway network until all necessary easement and right of way was acquired. It basically became clear to staff in 2019 that the best opportunity to achieve dedication of the remaining pieces were to build out the pathway system where the town was able to in the hopes that landowners would see the benefit and dedication. So essentially in 2019, we stepped back and said, if we're going to get dedication from some of the some of the more territorial of our of our landowners through town, maybe we show them what that looks like and start putting in pathways and implementing those pathways where we can. And that process has worked. We've had several landowners that said, oh, that's that's all you need the easement for. Why don't you tell me 15 years ago and have dedicated us easement since. So we'll be hopefully filling in all the the missing holes in our pathway network. The the alternative is where some landowners just don't want to dedicate additional easement. We're also exploring alternative routes where no other option is available. So that's still still on the table. The same limiting factors related to the pathways can also be attributed to developing alternative east west vehicular access for emergency purpose. If you recall, even going back to 2000 in my research, kind of preparing for tonight. There's plans and studies have always detailed the need for alternative means of ingress and egress for emergency purposes north of Cave Creek Road as it goes through town as well as south. We know where they where they should be, where they where they line up to be. So over previous decades, we have that information. However, we would need dedication from landowners in this case. And in some cases, the land is vacant where future right of way dedication would be required at the time of development. So luckily, you know, we've there are some undeveloped tracts of land north and south of Cave Creek Road, where if at some time they came in with a plan to subdivide or otherwise develop, we could require dedication at that time to allow for emergency access. Then lastly, the last thing I'll touch on is parking and we all know that it's a large need in the Town Core. I mentioned the Neri Parcel is existing public parking earlier. Just want to report that staff is currently in discussion with other landowners in the Town Core about the possibility to lease or exchange town owned property in order to add to the inventory of public parking conveniently located within the Town Core. Staff also continues to discuss additional parking, which is open to the public with existing business owners and the possibility of adding parking onto their currently developed properties. So there are some commercially developed land. Rebel Ranch is comes to mind as as a parcel that could add additional parking open to the public. And it's something that I've discussed with the new owners as well. So that's kind of a background. I'll turn it over to Hal as as he can discuss the most recent transportation safety plan and study that was completed and presented to council in 2021. How can elaborate on the recommendations from that study, provide an update on the status and potential funding sources of the project?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The town within its Town Core has an issue with pedestrian, sorry, pedestrian safety.
That too.
Yeah, that too. Yes. This is caused by a combination of high traffic speeds, low lighting and pedestrians crossing it unsignalized and sometimes not even marked crossing locations. We have a lot of guys who a lot of people want to play Frogger. In 2018, the council requests that we look into methods to improve the pedestrian safety. The town hired consultant Y2K to look at a short term fix to get us through the tourist season. They recommended the gateway method that we employed that we employed by all of our crosswalks. This included striping and placement of warning signs and the addition of vertical poles and lanes to keep the cars within their own lanes at the crosswalks. This was met with rousing success by everybody. Well, some success, yeah, but.
It was rousing.
And while this seemed to meet some some success, the repair and replace it and then became quite labor intensive. At times we felt it was a sport to see which large truck could spin its tire on them and destroy them. I think the winner was the one who could get to there. The fastest half of the crews had replaced them. There were actually times where we put them in, we go to move to another location and there would be somebody in a, you know, great big four by four that would spin their tires and rip them out. We did not replace the gateway when we when we removed them to resurface Cave Creek Road about a year ago. In 2020, the town was awarded a grant from MAG for a local agency safety study. The completion of the project was delayed until 21 as COVID has severe impact on both the traffic and pedestrian counts needed to do the study. If you remember, this town looked sort of like a ghost town. Those were the days that we had scheduled to count how many pedestrians were crossing at any location and what the traffic looked like going to our bars and restaurants, which were closed for COVID. So that was we delayed until business had resumed. In 21, the town applied for and received a second follow up grant study that would identify and quantify specific projects with metrics and costs. The study also performed to traffic warrant analysis for crosswalks that were part of the planning department's trail system. A warrant study is normally a precursor to determine if the conditions and need for the crossing exist. So what we did is we had a initial study that was done by MAG. And then we we identified we wanted to come up with costs and actual warrants that would dictate which ones were the best ones to move forward on. The consultant hired by MAG made a presentation to Town Council of the conclusion of each of the two studies. The study, the end study, the phase two study gave three projects that had the highest cost benefit ratio and the town staff has started pursuing grant funding through the roadway safety program for the work. The three projects each consists of raised pedestrian crosswalks and a rectangular flashing, excuse me, rectangular rapid flashing beacon that would illuminate when a signal button was pushed by the pedestrian wishing to cross the street. The three locations for crossing Cave Creek Road have been presented for funding are Hidden Valley on the east or excuse me, the west end, Hilltop, so Dairy Queen, Kiwanis in the middle and the Roadhouse area. The idea behind the three projects was that the raised crosswalks would lower the speed through town, which is now close to 40 miles per hour and provide a designated location to cross with warning devices that would let motors know when pedestrians were present. Having a speed reduction measure on both ends and one in the middle helped control the speed through town. I believe the former council member Deef referred to the raised crosswalks as sleeping policemen. They are on duty all the time. There has been no commitment to do the projects. If the funding were to be approved, the town would be responsible for the design of the projects. 100,000 has been budgeted for this effort. However, we would need to bring the contract for the design back to council for approval. The town will not push forward with the design of the project unless funding for the construction in fiscal year 24 was granted by MAG. The town staff has made a presentation to MAG for the about 470,000 in grant funding for the three projects. It will be the town councils that will authorize the expenditure of the design funds for the project and ultimately the construction of the improvements, should we be fortunate enough to receive the grant fund. So with that, we open it up to any questions you might have.
So Hal, are these speed tables, not speed bumps?
They're speed tables. So if you picture them, what they are is they're about a crosswalk, the full width, the crosswalk that will be raised about four inches off the pavement. They'll be designed for 30 to 35 miles an hour design speed, not the seven or seven to 10 miles per hour, the speed hump or speed bump is usually about five miles an hour. A speed hump is about 10 miles an hour. So these would be designed for 30 miles an hour. It would also have to be drain designed for drainage to accommodate the drainage that comes down Cave Creek Road.
And so cars drive over them and do people cross over them?
Yes. So basically, if you picture the full width of a crosswalk, that would be the flat part of the sort of the table mesa. It would have ramps that would lead up to it. So it would tend and they would be striped to show that they were raised portion of the roadway so that it would allow the pedestrians to cross at that location. But it would also act as a area where because of the elevation change, we tend to slow traffic down.
Do we not have something currently at the Roadhouse location?
We have a crosswalk and we have a rudimentary beacon that we put in about five years ago. About five years ago that we have. What we find is that when they were doing the pedestrian counts, the flow of traffic coming out of the chip and out of the Roadhouse were crossing at other locations and that was noted within the studies.
And weren't we thinking about putting up some kind of a guard rail or barrier so people in that that bar area in particular couldn't cross at places where they're not supposed to?
We are looking at that as a future phase, but right now we want to get the safe crosswalk and the speed lowered to try and help our pedestrian safety.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a guy that walks uptown. I don't know, three days a week from Rancho Mianana and I I hear the locations that you're describing. But I I wonder how will we begin a new list? Those three might work out. They sound like they're important. But there are certainly other places in front of local Johnny's. People are in the morning, people are facing the sun right there. They haven't slowed down from their their trip up Cave Creek Road from the intersection. So I guess Hal, what I'm asking is the future, what are we looking for beyond beyond this piece that you have sort of done the works?
The reason we picked these three locations is because of the cost benefit ratio that was worked out as part of the factor in the studies. The one at the Roadhouse had about a 6.25 factor. In other words, six times the cost benefit ratio for benefit over cost. Hidden Hidden Valley, which is the one that's close to local Johnny's. That one had about a three and the one at Hilltop had about a 2.5. All three together had over an eight, a factor of cost benefit ratio that was worked out. And these are formulas that are used when they're when MAG is looking at the RSP funding. So that's why we wanted it done with the metrics that they would be using for making decisions. But again, all three together. There are other locations that have been recommended. But they had not yet achieved the cost benefit ratio that these three had. So that's why we picked the these three from the study.
Thank you. In other words, low hanging fruit, the most apt to probably receive that grant award if we continue.
You need at least a two cost benefit ratio to achieve a to achieve funding to be considered for funding. So we made the shortlist on all three.
I understand that. And I also know that part of part of my role in this chair is the health and welfare of folks in town. And that road still has needs.
Many needs, yes. We we do have the two signs on either side which keep track of the speed and also keeps track of the number of cars, but mostly speed that we can look at. And so we're able to see what the speeds are coming into town from both directions. And right now, the 85th percentile speed, which is sort of the speed of 85% or less of those cars are traveling at has is now exceeding 40 miles an hour.
Then I have one more question, and this is not so much about the traffic right there, but it's about the sides of the road, the the transition between the curb and into where the trail system, those those composite trails that we have along the sides of the road are wonderful. And is there any plan in place to enhance the landscaping there? Or am I way out in left field here? Don't tell me I am.
No landscaping landscaping. Right now, we're working on the pedestrian safety. Landscaping is always an issue that we have to look at. Unfortunately, when the median project was done, the federal median project was done. Most of the meters and irrigation systems were terminated. So we would have to go back and reestablish irrigation in those areas. Another thing that we're looking at as a is low light pedestrian lighting that would be ground level lighting, not not street lights above, but low level to help with the path and for people to be able to see the path when they're walking at night. What we find is most of the accidents have been caused during daylight hours, except for the bar area where that is obviously a nighttime issue.
Hal, do we have an ETA on when we might hear about the grant?
We're hoping in January, the funding is the funding is fiscal year 24. So the town, if we got news that we could have the grant for the So the town, if we got news that we could have the grant for the construction. The town has budgeted this year a hundred thousand dollars for pedestrian, which would cover our design. So we could start the design before the end of the fiscal year. And then move on to the. Move on to the construction in fiscal year twenty four, should we be fortunate to get the grant, but without knowing that we're going to get the funding. Then it's not worth doing the design.
So the funding that we're asking for is almost a half a million dollars.
Four hundred and seventy thousand, yes.
Right. And so. Worst case scenario, if we did not get the grant, would we be able to fund any of this work ourselves?
We could probably fund some of it, the rapid flashing beacons. We could certainly do the design and then in the next year we could pick one, probably the roadhouse one to do first. And then. We would take them in order of the we'd take them again in order of the cost benefit ratio.
I think that we should always have a plan B. It's necessary work, it's safety for our for our residents and visitors. So. Let's hope that some of it can be accomplished, even if we don't get a grant.
And even if we and we put it in as three separate grants, not as one. So we're hopeful that even if we don't get all, if we don't get three of them, they might give us one or might give us two. So we did put them as three separate grants, even though we sold it as the project is one project. But we put it in as three different funding mechanisms.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. I noticed that a neighboring town has is the competitive route for traffic headed east, west. To. Tondo Hills, Desert Mountain, Carefree. Bartlett Lake and beyond. Seems like a lot of traffic. Is not coming to town, it's going through town.
Correct.
Do we have any idea of how great that is?
We actually, let's see.
I don't need a specific number, just.
No, but what I have is I have the latest traffic surveys that we've done. And the counts from the metering as it's coming in from the south and heading there. And. It's somewhere in the. Somewhere in the month, we're looking at, let's see, I gotta get to the right one here. Cave Creek and Spur Cross. We're running around in a month, we're running around seventeen thousand cars through our town.
Per day or per month?
Per day per month. That's in a month.
Seventeen thousand cars a month?
Yes, seventeen thousand cars a month.
That just sounds like it's a factor of thirty off.
Yeah, well, at or under limits is seventeen thousand within the ten percent pace was nineteen was nineteen thousand total. And so. Yeah, it's about. Between nineteen and twenty thousand cars.
A month?
A month. Oh, I'm sorry. That was a week. Sorry. That's a week. Nineteen thousand cars.
That failed my test of reasonableness.
That 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 test better.
The machine only works three days a week.
It it but it seems like. Traffic is being forced through our town. Because the the alternate route is zigzagging all over with a crazy quilt of striping and lane changes. It does mag consider the price that we're paying to support the Miracle County government that is to our east?
They they do. That's why we're being considered for the grant. And that's why they also funded these two safety studies a hundred percent. These cost, these two studies that you see here cost zero dollars to the town of Cape Creek. They were funded through grants that we applied for and were totally funded by MAG. So the alternative is Carefree Highway, which. Which is part in a part in that city to be unnamed and a part in Scottsdale. And they and actually Scottsdale is now looking at widening. Of Carefree Highway probably in the next fiscal year or two, that they will be widening Carefree Highway east of Cape Creek Road.
And that would help.
Mr. Mayor, just anodally to the last five, six months with Carefree doing the disconnect and in infrastructure improvements to. For their own system, they've had detour signs basically pushing traffic through town and around. As opposed to Carefree Highway down to Tom Darlington and and northbound from there. So it's been if you've noticed anything in the last six months up to present that that might be a might be a cause for it as well.
Yes, it's historical. I just.
Been a yeah, it's been a constant.
There were twenty to thirty minute waits on Carefree Highway because of the lane because they were down to one lane.
Any other questions from council? There's no public comment, but I'm putting public comment in, so.
David Phelps. Cape Creek resident, I attended the study sessions with the MAG. Study person who did the study, I think she did this, that team did the study during COVID. Which might have crippled the numbers. Just because of what everything we were going through when the study was done. Something that I have learned that I would like to share with everybody is that. I think we're going to end up with these patches and proposals, but I think we actually need to start stopping traffic. Like I believe that we should take and consider strongly an approach of a four way stop at Surrey. A four way stop at Rancho. And I'll tell you that Rancho. Is a death trap. You've got the sight lines are good. Nobody drives the speed limit north or south. Everybody here has been passed going the speed limit through the town core. And when they hit that corner. It's forty five, it's fifty miles an hour. Because we just don't regulate, we don't manage the traffic speed. And we could do away with all this. But we don't want to become what we don't want to be, which is a speed trap. The other way to manage that speed is. You become a stop trap. That's because people don't want to follow speed limit. So you got to slow down, you got to stop. It would make it much safer for the residents of Rancho Manana. And the community across the street. From Rancho Rancho Manana Boulevard as well. I think I see people constantly because I use that intersection a lot. I see people constantly taking. The death trap. Approach of pulling out to the center lane and hoping somebody's going to let them in or slow down and on that turn on that curve coming out of town. Nobody slows them. It's just not in their DNA. They're headed somewhere. So I would encourage you to look at this study, consider this information, but understand that these are Band-Aids. Until you actually deal with the speed and the only way you deal with the speed. You got to stop people. That's what I think we should start looking at. Reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
Charlie Spitzer, Cape Creek resident, I have a question and a comment. Comment is, I don't know if you've been through Sedona in the past. Four years or so, five years. And they've put in in their median really obnoxious ways so that people can't cross them. You might want to consider something like that in order to funnel people to the places that you do want them to cross. My question is, since you brought up mediums. What is what's going to happen with the two monuments that were taken out? They were destroyed by accident, by speeding accidents.
One right in front of Rancho Manana. Did the other one fall victim up the hill?
The the big horse down down the down the street isn't there either? Yeah, it was there this morning. Did something happen today?
Yeah, it's like I got to go.
No, then there's the one. And that is a result of exactly the problem that Mr. Phelps talked about.
Correct. Yeah, it was a flat tire and unfortunate accident that that caused the. Untimely demise of the one sign in front of Rancho Manana. I'm not sure what. If any, at this point, we've worked out it's something that we likely have to budget for. I know that those signs were donated. Through the graciousness of the Boy Scouts and the Boy Scout troop installed those.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
As long as you brought my you brought.
Charlie. Those got those dividers in Sedona are exactly what we had talked about for here. So that's what the question that I asked, especially out by the bars. So we have it on our radar.
I wouldn't want to see it in the median because we have so many small businesses that you can't get into. You're gonna have everybody doing U terms instead, which is going to bring up its own set of problems. But it's more for pedestrians.
Right.
Thank you. No comments?
I have a question. Mr. Roy, excuse me. How is I'm in order asking a question of how? Yes. I'm sorry. How is a crosswalk contemplated south of Town Hall? And if so, would it be contemplated to have a table speed bump at that point?
Right now, we've looked at two crossings. Part of the second study was a warrant study for a crosswalk. One right across the street that would take you over to Oregano's. And one that was just south of town or south of Surrey. Yeah, at Surrey to line up. Both of those crosswalks did not meet the warrant conditions current. The feeling of the people doing the study was that the one at Surrey was very close. It just needed more pedestrian crossing. The worry that we have is that the speed through town is. Not making that a safe crossing at this time. And so they didn't meet warrant for that reason. There also needs to be. So the feeling was that once. If the development hidden, Hidden Valley went in. Yeah, for an example, then there would be additional pedestrian traffic that would warrant the crossing. So they didn't say no, it was close, but it didn't meet the warrant at the time the study was done.
And and a table bump there, I would think would particularly if it's designed for thirty thirty five miles per hour. It might help to reduce the number of people that are going through it fifty and fifty five.
The thing that we were looking at that one crosswalk was more of the Hawk system. Which is a different type of crossing system. It's a lot more expensive than the rapid flashing beacon. But because of the speed, the Hawk might be a better application for that.
What is a hawk?
Trying to think it's a hybrid. I'm trying to remember the exact.
Is it lights on both sides of?
A little sturdier than an eagle.
No, it's a it's actually the city of Phoenix and city of Scottsdale are putting those in at some of the major crossings that they have. Unsignalized crossings that they have. Where it's a. It actually is like it looks like a stoplight where the lights are hanging down. It's just not flashing beacons on the side. It's actually like a crosswalk, a cover that goes over it. And then it flashes the light when somebody's in it. Again, because of the speeds that we have there as part of the warrant problem that we have.
Is that like at Carolyn's?
Yes, at the Carolyn, this would be the Hawk at Carolyn is that's a hawk. Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions from council?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item five is a council discussion of possible approval of a change order with MGC contractors for the installation of elevated walkways and staircases. At the water treatment plant for an amount up to five thousand five hundred sixty eight dollars, and that's the lowest number that Sean has ever brought to this council.
It's in addition.
The other hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Baron Council, Kerry said had his gas for this money. So back in April, I'm remiss in not having a photo to show you, but back in April, council authorized the contract to do some walkway. I mean, catwalk, we call it catwalks. And improvements at the water treatment plant in twenty twenty when we brought the Paul treatment membrane units to the plant. We had to fit a lot of stuff onto the site. So there was a lot of going over top of equipment, et cetera, piping out there. So the staff have been really diligent and working through that. Just as safely as they can, but this was a significant improvement that was necessary. We put it in last year's budget to start the project. We got the contract awarded in April. And we put in a little bit of contingency at that time with some of the uncertainty. It was a bit of a field fit project. We did have a design, but we do have so much equipment at the site, so much pipe work that the the vendor did have to do some work and we'd actually committed to moving some equipment also. So as the project has completed, we we can rebudgeted requested the funds to be put together in this year's budget. The the walkways have been improved, completed, but we ran into a couple of issues where we had to move some equipment and that's what drove the need for the change order. We had some equipment that was being underhung under the trailers. We actually moved those those equipment out to be underhung under the new catwalk, so it actually provided better access for the. The staff, we also looked at changing or we did change out the the grading was actually originally it's a metal structure. If you go to the site. It was supposed to be metal grading. We actually changed it out to fiberglass reinforced plastic grading. That was actually an add to the project, but if we were still waiting for the aluminum grading, we'd still be waiting to complete the project aluminum grading because of deliveries. While the main structure is aluminum, the grading was a delivery would have been in the new year. So we we made that decision to move forward. So. While we originally had asked for a hundred point five thousand dollars, which included a little bit of a buffer. We knew we were going to get into some field fit conditions and we've gone over that amount by the five thousand five hundred and sixty eight dollars. That's why we're asking for council authority so we can make the final decision on the project.
Questions from council?
Does this complete? You're not going to need another round of funding after this one?
No, this completes the 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 walkway improvements. So we're done. We do have other improvements planned at the site. Those are budgeted. So, yeah. The walkway is done.
Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve and change a change order with MGC contractors. For the installation of elevated walkways and staircases at the water treatment plant for an amount up to five thousand five hundred sixty eight dollars.
Second.
I'm going to hold that at this point. Is there public comment on this? I missed the public comment.
No one wishes to speak.
Saying none, we have a motion in a second. So since it's financial roll call, please.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Yes.
Vice mayor, right? Yes. Councilmember Argentin?
I.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Elkhla?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Yes. Got your five thousand. Council discussion of possible approval of a professional services contract with Black and Beach Corporation. To develop an integrated utility master plan for an amount up to three hundred and five thousand three hundred and thirty two dollars. Based on by the utilities director.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And I'll just introduce before I start, Brandy Thinkpen, who is the Black and Beach Project Manager is actually in the audience. I should if you want to come up or. So I'll just go through a quick presentation. This is, I think, a very significant project for us in utilities. So the town back in August went out to to secure a professional services consultant to help us do a new integrated utility master plan. The last master plans that the utilities have done. System wide date back to twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen timeframe. There's been several projects that have been done since that time that have changed. You know, we've added the Paul membrane units. We've lost the five hundred and fifty accounts or we're in the midst of losing the five hundred and fifty accounts in Carefree. And the town has actually entered into intergovernmental agreements with the city of Phoenix to both. Separate their service areas out of Carefree Highway and actually have them allow them to treat and deliver a portion of our CAP supplies, which will greatly enhance reliability of the system overall. Once the improvements are done. So we're looking for and to create an integrated master plan. I'll pause real quick there. It's sort of a tongue twister, but typically you do. You do send single master plans where you look at your water system, you look at your sewer system, you look at your different systems individually. Integrated master plan is for the new buzz phrase in the industry because they all tie together. Your water resources feeds into your water system. You actually have to get the water resources in order to produce that water. Which goes back to, you know, we deliver that to a lot of to our customers and they return that to us in the form of wastewater. We treat that wastewater, which gets as effluent that actually can then be used to for water resources. That's why it's an integrated master plan. It's best. For a municipality and one like ours that actually does all utility services, full fledged utility services to look at all these systems in one go. So the goal of this is to look at ways to improve the services and performance and reliability of our systems. And to provide an outline and how the town can best manage our water resources is a key one for us moving forward. Obviously, we have the upcoming shortages or the pending shortages. Obviously, we have the upcoming shortages or the pending shortages on the CFP canal. It's very important for us to actually have that plan moving forward of how we're gonna address that. And another big thing is, you know, is to help prioritize our capital improvement program. That's the big thing that we do here in the town. We adopt the five-year capital improvement program every year for the utilities with the first year funded, but it's important for us to know what we need to do to support both existing, the existing customers and for future growth in the system and what we need to do. So the master plan will help us do that. So as I mentioned, again, the components, we'll talk about water resources, the water system, and that's the treatment and delivery, the distribution system. The wastewater system, which is our collection system and the treatment down at the water treatment facility. And then our reclaimed water system. People aren't probably used to hearing that because we actually do have a reclaimed water system. We actually currently only have one customer, which is the Ranch Manana Golf Course on that system. So. So underwater resources. Just reiterate, you know, the, the town currently uses Central Arizona Project Water, municipal and industrial water for our allocation. That's what we provide water to, water to the main system. We do have some wells and we've been looking at a well study. None of those wells are currently operational. The town does have rights to groundwater rights, but currently we don't have access to it. Desert Hills was built on groundwater, but since the town's taken over operations, that system, we've had to supplement anywhere from fifty percent to the last couple of years to up close to seventy percent of their water with treated CAP water to keep them whole. The town has done some good things in twenty seventeen. They adopted the water policy, which helped them look at preserving the town's water resources. And we just, last year or at the end of twenty twenty-one, did the update, which did some things like added volumetric limits on new accounts to allow us again to look to help preserve the town's water resources. And something new that we've been working on is water storage and water recharge. This year, I'm glad to say that we've been able to get some water put in the ground and we've actually generated long-term storage credits for the town for the first time in our history, which I think is valuable as we move forward. A quick little exhibit of the Cave Creek Water System. So you can see that the, the green is our municipal areas and you'll see the, the customers on the eastern side, the Cave Creek customers. About two hundred of the customers in, that are physically in Carefree have been separated. In the next three to six months, the remaining portion will be, will be off the system. I'm showing the interconnect with the Desert Hill system at Twenty Fourth Street and Cloud Road. And then this is our Desert Hill system, again, with the interconnect site with the Cave Creek system. So it's a little bit smaller system, about nineteen hundred accounts where the main system, once the separations complete, it'll do twenty-three hundred accounts. But again, we, we run them as, there are two separate systems, but in fact, we use the same staff and we run it. We try to provide the same service to all our customers. So the intergovernmental agreements with Phoenix are some big things that we've been looking at and we are working towards. You know, as I mentioned, South of Carefree Highway is actually in the Phoenix and Old Phoenix Water Service Area. So that the, there will be a project starting here shortly to, for Phoenix to do improvements so they can take that service area over. But the more importantly, I think I'll give a lot of credit to Kerry Direct for making this happen. To, to get the second portion of that agreement, which was an interconnect site, which is what Black and Beach is actually, has also been selected for that one. Is underway to actually design that to treat and deliver up to one point four million gallons a day of the town CAP. So we're not buying water from them. They're treating and delivering our water for us. But to bring it into a new site would actually greatly enhance reliability of the system once it's done. And we also got a emergency service connection if necessary with them. And actually the ability to recharge the facilities, cost-wise is more efficient for us and a lot less expensive to recharge with the CAP. But that is another option for the town. We can have access to three injection wells that they have. And we actually have all that permitted, so we could use so as if necessary. I like to talk about the wastewater system because that actually is the first utility the town operated. We talk a lot about the water systems. They're bigger. But it was nineteen ninety-three that the town actually purchased the sewer company. And then through nineteen ninety-five, we built the improvement district number two, which brought sewer service through the town core. And then in two thousand and ten, the town took over the, the heavy lift of actually constructing a new wastewater treatment plant at Forty Fourth Street and Carefree Highway. That was really necessary, both because the existing plant that was in Ranch Manana was over capacity. But they needed to do that in order to get commercial service, commercial service to, to along Carefree Highway. So a couple of big things that we've got ahead of us, though, on the wastewater side is we, when the town was relocating the treatment plant, there's a couple of neighborhoods that were constructed with dry sewers. So these are properties that actually, while there are gravity sewer lines through the development, none of them are connected to the properties because they don't have an outfall. So we need to, with this master plan, look at how we can actually get different alternatives to make that, those live sewers. And then I've mentioned, I'm showing over here on the sort of east side of Cave Creek Road, what we call the non-sewered areas. That's sort of an area that's close to existing sewers that we have in Cave Creek Road, but those, those properties are on septic system. So can we do something to actually look at bringing those customers on to the system? And what would it take to actually extend the collection system up in that area? It's very, I think, topography wise, it's, it's challenging and trying to do a gravity sewer system, but that's something that we want to look at with this master plan. You know, the, the wastewater system has a much smaller customer base. We're just over nine hundred accounts right now. With the new rates that have been put in place as of January, we're working towards making it a true enterprise fund. But that, I think, is estimated right now to take the full five years of the rate study to actually get us to a point where the operations and maintenance costs are being covered by the rate, the revenues generated. The debt service on moving the plant will be paid off in the next five to ten years. But this is, this master plan will help us sort of set the goals of what we want to be for, moving forward. And we can have discussions with councils as far as, you know, what I think there's a big question, you know, do we wanna promote people to convert from septic to gravity sewer systems? And we want to look at forming another improvement district, but these are some of the things that we can do. And through the master plan, we can look at some of these questions. And then the reuse system, again, since the nineteen nineties, there's actually, when the original Cave Creek Sewer Company was constructed, that was actually providing, it was partly constructed to provide effluent for the Ranch Manana Golf Course. The town has continued that relationship and contractual relationship since we took over operations. When we relocated the plant in two thousand nine, two thousand and ten timeframe, we, we constructed a new effluent line all the way back up to the golf course. You know, people don't think about it, but we have a four, four and a half mile effluent line that we manage. But right at this point, they can't take the, all the water that we can deliver to them. It's at certain times of the year, during the winter time, when our wastewater flows are actually the greatest, is when their irrigation demand is the least. So at this, and we also send a backwash water from the treatment process at the water treatment plant. So we do have an imbalance in that. So we do want to look at, is there other alternatives, other things that we can do with that water, look at the system itself? You know, the goal of generating water resources and using the town's water resources the best that we can. So we went out for a request proposals in August. Two firms had submitted. After reviewing our proposals, Black and Beach was selected, so Brandy will be our project manager moving forward. The scope of work, it's, it's just over three hundred thousand dollars. Part of that, it'll be, you know, we've actually done some work to update the water system model and we've done some work through the work that was done recently by GHD to look at the collection system assessment. We have a very good wastewater model right now. So we can really spend some time not having to spend a lot of time on updating those things. Technically, we can really jump into the master plan and really make some decisions here. It'll take about a year to complete, just over a year. If you look at the scope of work, I think the estimate is by the end of February of twenty twenty-four is when the final report will be done. But I, I expect that actually by next fall, we'll start to see some results. Some things that we can start budgeting for and put into our capital program moving forward and bringing that forward to council. But to wrap it all up is gonna take just over a year at this point. So with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
With the kept water that's coming into the system, which is virtually all of our water, how much are we losing to leaks? What percentage?
Well, we, we relied that our quarterly reports, we, you know, we, we do that. We know we have a metering issue with the delivery of the cat pipeline. And then we do account for, and there's a, in our, it's in the, I think, I know it's in the quarterly report. There's a chart that we actually do for our lost non-account for water. I don't have that number in front of me right now, but it's something we track very closely. We, we track also our operational things where we un-metered water, we call it unbilled water on the report. When we have to do things like flush, or if we have a line break, we try to account for that. Right now, in the eyes of ADWR, we're over ten percent lost water in the system. Moving forward, I believe, and, and part of that's in the main system and the desert hill system there, I think the losses is, I think, I'm speaking of my memory, I think it's three or four percent. With this new rate study, one thing that we, we, we wanted to accomplish is because we're sending all of our CAP, are such a large proportion of CAP water to desert hills, is that there's a treatment and transmission losses not being accounted for. So we're gonna move some of that loss over to desert hills with the arrangement that we made with the, the rate study. I am, I'm hopeful by, by next year, every, for the last three years I've been here, I've actually had to write a letter to Arizona Department of Water Resources about our lost non-account for being over ten percent. It's actually mandated by the, the fourth management plan, now the fifth management plan for the state to actually be below ten percent.
And will Phoenix be delivering CAP water to us on a regular basis?
Yeah, the assumption is, at this point, that it's, it's, it's a thousand gallons a minute. So I want to have that discussion with their staff to make sure that they're comfortable with us taking a thousand gallons a minute. We've actually talked operationally that, you know, while we have a storage reservoir at the site, do we want to have a thousand gallons? Or you want to have some fluctuation ability within that flow? But we're at this point thinking that that might be a base load on the system and then we use our treatment plant to deal with, deal with the peak loads during the day or during the seasonal peak loads.
And that will be raw cap water that they're delivering?
No, they're, they're, the actual contract is that they will take the water off the canal, treat and deliver to us. And that's the, the rate that they give us. And we have the interconnect site to receive that water and it's potable water that we're getting from them. But it's, it's our CAP water that they're delivering to us from a water resource standpoint. Thank you.
Sean, I have a little question about some of the details. And I noticed that there are monthly meetings, progress meetings on the process. For this work?
Yeah, I expect with, with Brandy will be meeting monthly just to go through all the data requests initially coming through and then meeting with staff.
And is there an opportunity for public to have a peek at those meetings?
Typically, those are, are fairly technical. What I expect to do is maybe I do check-ins with council, I want to do my quarterly reports. But then we'll get to points when I think we would like to probably bring some things for to, to, to the public in the council. So yeah, something we could work into the process. Yeah.
I think that's.
A lot of it'll be very technical and you'd be very bored, so.
But it, it's a question.
Yeah.
And then the other question I have is, how does the lift station at, in Ranch Manana? How does that fit into this whole conversation? I mean, will they look at the efficiencies of that? Will they look at the spills that occur around that?
Yeah, I've been living with that site for three and a half years. You know, I think we made some substantial improvements in the operation of that system. Yeah, over about ninety percent of the town's wastewater flows go through that site. I believe it needs some operational improvements. We have something we put in the capital program this last year. I think we pushed it out to year six of the CIP, so I was looking at tenure CIP. I'd like to have the, the plan actually look at what it would take to actually rebuild that site. I think when, when GHD looked at it, we were talking about a million, two million and a half dollars to do it properly at that site. So it's something we have to budget for. But, you know, long term, the original lift station was actually, it was the effluent plant of the original water treatment plant. It was, is repurposed and it wasn't the best facility to repurpose, but I think we've done some substantial improvements to improve the reliability. And, you know, knock on wood, we didn't have any spills this year because of the improvements my staff have made at that site.
And then one last quick, quick question, and this is, when this is, when this project is finished, when this assessment is done, will there be a, a plain speak report that the town can, that citizens in the town can view and kind of understand?
Yeah, one of the, the things we've asked for is an executive summary. So that will give the high level, you know, maybe six to eight pages with some more exhibits and some other stuff to discuss things like water resources and where we're at. So we have that, the Cliff Notes, high leveled executive summary document that staff members are, count, or that citizens and everybody else could see. The document itself will be kind of technical in a lot of ways, but that, but that'll also be something available too. But it'll be, be made up of individual chapters, talking about water resources specifically. And then again, the water system and the water model results that we've got back, so it might end up being a couple of volumes just because when you get into the modeling, you get a lot of results. No, but we'd like to have an executive summary, a, a nice executive summary that we can have.
Right.
Yeah.
Sanitizer. Are we going to look at changing sanitizer from a TTHM creating chlorine to something that other places have used that doesn't?
Yeah.
TTHM.
I do want to actually talk to Brandy and her team about this. One thing we're really wanting to key in is water age. And spring mania speed is, you know, again, the, the use of bleach and the fact that that has become it with our surface water that we treat and the use of chlorine in the system that does become something that we get into disinfectant byproducts, which is TTHM. Helicidal acid five, I think is the other one that gets formed. So that's something that, yeah, we definitely want, we, we could look to consider that right now. Bleach has been effective. It's actually, there's also some state requirements. I'm not sure if anybody else in the state is using anything besides that. There's some alternate technologies like ozone, but that's things that we can look at with the report and should look at.
Chlorine has been the, in wa, in water has been the greatest public health advancement ever.
Yeah.
Antibiotics and all the other things because so many people died of waterborne diseases, but.
Yeah.
Then they found the TTHMs.
Yeah, that's, that's where, again, the layout of our system isn't the best for the, for. We have a lot of areas up north that were designed to think that there's an anticipation that the water system is gonna grow up north more than it did. So, or that ever will. So we have to have some discussions and I want to have some frank discussions about, you know, we have a twelve inch water line that goes up spur across road. And, and, you know, we should be look at getting rid of that. There's a lot of water and every, every month, every day, I'm dumping water at the top of that line to keep it, keep water quality.
Westside water. What's, what's the plan to, for, what's the?
So I'm gonna do that as a, we're gonna do that as actually a separate study outside of the master plan. The master plan will look at how to provide service all system wide. There's been a request specifically to look at the west side and the west side, what we refer to as the Dwyb area. I'm gonna look at a separate master plan to do that through another consultant.
Well, I.
Into this.
My recollection is, that's more of a scoping type study, budgetary type study rather than getting in the deep, deep.
Well, since in that area, really, because there is a twelve inch water line that runs through the center of that area, where there's a total of, I think, ninety lots that could be developed up there. I think that I can do that as a sub-study. I didn't want to, you know, add that to Brandy's scope because we've got some bigger issues there. And I think it can be dealt with on, it's more of a smaller macro scale and looking at the layout of configuration of lines up there and how we can make that system work for those customers. Independent of the main system, what'll feed into the work that Brandy and her group are gonna be doing is how we get water up to there and how we best link the systems together. But my anticipate, my thought was to do is this separate scope of work.
And, and for the benefit of council, that, that, that is not necessarily something that the, the actual construction is not something that the town would necessarily would unlikely to do, it'd be done by a Dwyd. Because they're the beneficiaries, et cetera. And so that's, that's not in preparation for the town funding that bill at this point.
Yeah.
But it is in recognition of the fact that Cobb's Springs seems to be the never-ending project. Never gets done.
Yeah.
Hell hasn't frozen over yet.
Other questions? This item has public comment?
David Phelps.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, David Phelps here, Cave Creek resident. I've been following a couple of issues within the water department, the water businesses. Sean knows about it. It's probably not new to a portion of you. One of them is that becomes more and more clear as you peel the onion over years is the state of where we really are with the city of Phoenix Interconnect, which is most likely gonna be a fifteen million dollar deal by the time we get this thing up and going. I think we've been very optimistic on some of the pricing that we've seen so far in, in budgeting. And, and the, and the budget has grown over time, but I think that we can probably look at another fifteen million dollars for the Phoenix Interconnect. One of the things that everybody here needs to understand is that's not enough water. It's a great start. It's approximately enough water to take care of us during the winter time. It's woefully inadequate. The rest of the time. It just won't work. I'm here tonight to ask you to implement into your master plan a requirement of the study that we seek the reciprocity agreement to town of Carefree for our tie-ins with them. We are, we are in agreement to provide treated water to the town of Carefree if they so desire and call upon us to provide it to them. But we have no way of getting any water back to us that would basically be provided by either their groundwater wells or their tie with City of Scottsdale. There's a lot of moving parts and pieces. There's a lot of moving parts and pieces to this plate, but it's important that we follow through on it. Because we've got a lot of great parts, we've got a lot of great pieces, but we are also running logistically retard. We are spending an extra half million dollars a year to treat our own water. Now, that extra half a million dollars does not include the soon to be asked for already in the plan, three million dollars for more treatment capacity upgrades that we want to do at the water plant that we just spent a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to raise the walkways. But oh, by the way, we would like to get rid of that look and demolish what's inside the building and move everything that's outside inside the building, clean it up. This never goes away. It just keeps growing. It just keeps turning. I'm telling you, the treatment business for our scale, while we're losing, while we're losing, excuse me, while we're losing people in in our carefree accounts and we're capping the number of accounts over in Desert Hills. We cannot make sense to stay in the water treatment business. It is woefully expensive and it's about to get much more expensive. I would in in the connection fee is where I came up with the half million, the connection fee rate study just proved that you're at about a half a million dollars a year extra to treat your own water versus having the city of Phoenix provided to you. And the city of Phoenix can adjust their water rates that they provide the water to us. What I would propose is instead of us bringing water from the C A P canal up in our sixteen inch line that's got a great condition and has been analyzed and estimated to have another seventy years of life. I would suggest that we bring, we transport city of Phoenix treated water up the road, clean drinking water that we freshen up up here because it'll have the same age problem that we now have in our system by ourselves treating the water. But I would, instead of bringing the canal water up, I would bring treated water up through that same pipeline. I believe it can be done. I think it's just a will of insisting that it be done and a priority. I think it would serve the long term interest of the town by starting to plan it today or with this study logistically get us out of the businesses that don't make sense. Keep the technical staff that we need to finish the water to, you know, treat it as it ages in the line. And I have one more thing to add to that.
Well, your time is up, David. So we're going to, I'm going to stick to three minutes.
All right. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep an eye on it.
Yeah, ready for motion?
I was just wondering if Sean has a response to that comment.
Well, there's a lot, a lot of things to unpack there. First one is, or the last comment was, the city of Phoenix is is told us, they've told it from Kerry, my and my discussions with them is that they don't want to be our water provider. So they don't want to treat and deliver and be our only water provider for the town. They're willing to supplement us and help us out. But they don't want it to, they don't want care Cave Creek to be a wholesale customer to them. So the idea of getting us out of the treatment business is is, you know, right now, discussions with Phoenix are that they don't want to be in that to us. So we can work towards other things, things like converting the sixteen inch cap pipeline into a raw water line. That could possibly work, but we still have to meet our obligations to the Ranch Manana Golf Course. So currently we were delivering raw water to them. So if I eliminate that that pipeline, then I have to figure out another way to deliver and that that contract's still in place for the town till twenty forty nine. So we do, there's a lot to to put together, some things that we can look at. The master plan is really, we've got like a five, ten year goals within it, but there's also a thought of towards build outs. Maybe we can start putting those thoughts into the master plan. The master plan can look at those some months, long term ideas. You know, we'll be looking at the general plan of what what the growth of the system can be. And we still have a lot of undeveloped land on our eastern, our western side, the the state land trust. How would we feed that both for water and for wastewater, water resources? They're required to bring that in. So there's a lot to to bring into this plan. And I just don't see, answer the wrong questions, I don't see us getting out of the water business. You know, we do have an upcoming project. It's, we've mentioned it last couple of years in the capital improvement program to upgrade the water treatment plant. That's dating back to the reclassification that happened in twenty fifteen. And that's why we bought the palm membranes. The thought isn't, we're not going to bring those palm membranes inside. It's not practical. We we would actually empty out the building of the other treatment units and build new Paul units inside. And we've purchased the Paul, so we we supplement the Paul units. We have two million gallons of Paul membrane units. The project would be to clear out the rest of the building and add another two million. So we'd actually upgrade the plant to a four million gallon a day facility. The Pauls, we've had the conversation where there's only a couple hundred thousand dollars to go from a one M G D plant inside the building to a two, to a two. But we own those trailers, so we have to make a decision, you know, we sell those off at a later date, but we're not bringing those trailers inside. It's not practical, that equipment. So that what we've just spent on in the catwalk, the other improvements we're making at site, to me, those are long term, long terms, five to ten years. We're going to be using these equipment unless we want to sell those units off. But yeah, there's a lot of things for us to consider.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion.
You'll get one. Motion to approve professional services contract with Black and Beach Corporation to develop an integrated utility master plan for amount up to three hundred five thousand three hundred and thirty two dollars.
Second.
Yeah, in order to know what we're doing, we got to have a plan.
And we hired the best company to do it. Good luck.
Other council comments. Okay, so this is financial.
Vice Mayor Ray, yes, Councilmember Ogerton, Councilmember Bunch.
Yes.
Councilmember Elkman.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Yes.
Mayor Morris.
Yes. Motion carries seven zero and we are on to the council presentation.
Thank you.
Of the interview, thank you. County manager.
Mayor, members of the council and the public, we are at the best part of tonight's meeting. And I'm going to show you a picture of what you just spent another fifty five hundred dollars on. I gotta have my presentation. I'm not very good at reading that far away, even with my glasses, which I broke the bow off today. All right, so we're about five years now, staff has been putting together sort of a year in review for the calendar year that we present at the last meeting of of the year. And part of putting together this, this is just really an overview and every year there's a lot of stuff that gets cut out. So each department puts together their detailed report for their department. That will be on the website under their their page. And then this is just sort of a recap primarily of the things that the council accomplishments, what the public has seen, the things that the that the public is more affected by is, you know, the infrastructure and things like that. So that's, that's where we're starting. Okay, this thing working. Hit a button and nothing hit. Off to a good start.
Next page.
Yeah, next. There we are. We're starting with our financial viability. Just generally, our general fund sales tax revenue tracks to the budget estimate. We have estimates of the increases and that is this fiscal year I'm talking about right now because those are the numbers that we need to work with and our expenses are currently remain below the budget. But this year, for the third year in a row, we received the distinguished budget presentation award that is given out by the Government Finance Officers Association, the third year in a row. G F O A also gives out those that qualify the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And we receive that for the past fiscal year CAFR for the twenty fourth year in a row. The enterprise funds. As we noted at the most recent council meeting, the water and wastewater utility rates and the capacity fee increases were adopted by the council, which are critical to ensure that we've got the revenue for this upcoming infrastructure capital improvements for the enterprise funds. And it works towards operating as a true enterprise fund, as Sean mentioned, particularly with the wastewater. An overview of the development services, which is the combination of building and planning cases. The adoption, the council adopted the two thousand twenty one international building code with amendments. And so we are actually one of the first communities of the few that are now using this version of the most recent version of building codes and all the other international coast for electrical plumbing, the chemical, et cetera. That's what all those acronyms are. We issued five hundred and thirty four new permits total through November. Show the recent numbers that I have, which included forty seven home, new home permits and conducted over sixty seven hundred building and fire inspections. And something new this year to know is that we did dozens of these hot work inspections based on the new regulations that during the high fire season, you've got to have a permit for any spark causing activities. So we have the measurements for those and so we added that to the list of inspections done. The planning commission directed staff to research and prepare the zoning text amendments, which there are three in total. And if they are adopted, they would remove the planning commission's review from the site plan cases. The planning staff processed four zoning change requests, two of which are coming to this town council in two thousand twenty three. And recommended approval of the request to amend the zoning map and two were approved and adopted by the council this this past calendar year. Onto infrastructure improvements and we have several of them. I couldn't include all of them. Ridgeway Drive was an issue driven by resident complaints about hazardous road conditions. So our public works staff went out and you can see that on the left, that the two pictures still to the left are the before and after. So they cleaned up the roadway, cut back all the vegetation and widened the road where they could and just provided for a much safer roadway in that area. On the right side of the slide, the Miramonte Road South and Ranch Manana Boulevard, you can see the the actual pavement in that project that was done this year. But one of the biggest and really, really important road projects was the widening of that stretch of Spur Cross Road. That as you got out towards Burcross Ranch Conservation Area was really narrow and windy. The line of sight was very limited. And so there was about a six hundred and fifty feet of roadway that was widened. And there was an area that was wide from eighteen feet to twenty five feet. So it really was a safety issue and was one of, one of the major projects and and really had an effect on the traffic going out to the park. There's lots of other things that the public works crew does. Can't list everything, but they're trimming trees and spraying for weeds. That's my little plug that the globe chamomile is starting to pop up. So everybody needs to go out and look at their properties and kind of keep that in check the best you can and will be getting notices out to the public in the next week or so about that. The trail projects, these are the new trail projects that we're listing here. There's a pedestrian pathway extension from Grapevine Road south to Cape Creek Road that completes a neighborhood loop trail connecting Spur Cross to Schoolhouse. There's was a completion of the pedestrian pathway in front of the Cave Creek Museum. And the staff is still working to acquire trail easements within the town core, as we heard in the presentation earlier this evening. So that we can connect neighborhoods into the commercial core and have safer pedestrian access. The one thing we don't have photos of here, the big project was really a maintenance project of the Spur Cross and Schoolhouse Trails. Those were put in almost fifteen years ago and they're really well used and which is a good thing, but there's a lot of maintenance. So that was a big maintenance project. And as we complete these, these trails and get everything together, we'll be focusing more on maintenance for the future. That'll be where funds in the budget will be, will be used for. And they also completed a staff inventory and mapping of all the existing trails. And so in twenty twenty three, you're going to see a map put together for public use, which we haven't had. So that, that's a really good thing. We don't have any pretty pictures of the city Phoenix Interconnect because Black Beach this year was working on the design for the new potable water supply connection with the city of Phoenix. So that site will supply both pressure zones one and four. And the site will also have a million gallon storage reservoir and will accommodate the relocation of the cap for booster site. So we're going to keep moving along on that project. The skater system upgrades in twenty twenty two, we got to our final phase. We've been working on this since twenty twenty. The system allows for monitoring and control of sites remotely. And the system provides staff with alarms to warn of issues at the site. So this is all those neat little wires. What they finished up this year. Ranch Manana Lift Station, we that comes up, that came up a lot this year. We had a lot of bad storms, a lot of water with the I N I into the collection system. And and so as Sean said earlier, ninety percent of the town's wastewater passes through that lift station. And so it's critical that the pumps can handle the normal flow and we had a lot of big storms and the stormwater inflow. So they're working on that collection system separately, but at Ranch Manana, one of the two pumped discharge lines developed a leak and needed to be repaired. The new flow meters that they installed allow staff to better monitor the performance of the pumps at the site. And so we, knock on wood, we haven't had any issues with the most recent storms affecting that list station. There are a lot of collection system repairs made by, the assessment was made by G H D. That was completed and as part of the scope, G H D collected survey data on all the town's manholes and allowed them to create a more accurate model of the collection system. And again, that's to be used for the flow evaluations and future planning efforts. Wastewater Treatment Plant, there's new chlorine storage tank and pipe work that was installed at the chemical area and a new bar screen and grit classifier units were installed for the plant headwinds. Water distribution system, the staff worked with the developer to install new, new five hundred and eighty foot section of eight inch water line and Forty Ninth Street North of Carefree Highway, which completed a gap in the water system. The water treatment plant, these are the photos of that fifty five hundred dollars to complete this project. They installed the new elevated walkways by the Paul trailers and a staircase by the main building. So they make an improvement for the staff, access around the plant and safety for the staff as well. In public safety, a lot happened early this year. January third was the official startup of the Cave Creek Fire and Emergency Medical Services. And that is through an I G A with Daisy Mountain Fire and Medical. Few days later, Cave Creek, Daisy Mountain Fire District, Fire Department Emergency Services was officially accepted into the regional automatic aid response system by the Central Arizona Life Safety Council. And we finalized the purchase of the town fire station number one, January eleventh. And February and March of twenty two, we hosted, one day each month, we host a public brush drop off which is free to the public for residents to encourage them to clean up the brush and maintain defensible space on their property. And maintain defensible space on their property and we'll be doing that again. In February and March, just working on the schedule. Then May through July, we increased our daily brush truck staffing for the high wildland fire danger conditions, which we actually. Ended early because of the monsoon rains that we received. So we saved about forty, forty five thousand dollars because of the monsoons hitting early. And June thirteenth, we took delivery of the town's brush truck. And there's a picture, the shiny new piece of equipment with the town of Cave Creek. Fire Department logo on it. And then in November, we updated the Cave Creek Emergency Operations Plan. So that we've incorporated all of the changes and all of the updates to our emergency services in that plan. With a lot of activity. That really was a community collaboration. We have an I, an agreement between the town and Cave Creek Rodeo Committee. And so we worked the rodeo in March twenty twenty two was very successful. We have the Cave Creek Tourism Bureau that is run by a wonderful group of volunteers headed by Nina Spitzer. She's like the volunteer of all the volunteers, so she does a wonderful job, she puts out a monthly newsletter. And they put together. Concierge bus tour and dinner that. The planning director assisted with getting that funded and put together. There were twenty two valley area concierge and hospitality professionals that attended. And we also worked with. The planning staff to put together the new resident packet that is now handed out at the tourism bureau. So it has a little of everything in it from town regulations, you know, build, you know, you know. Had need a permit for something to what what to do in town and all kinds of information. It's really a nice good pack in and we've handed out a few already. So if you know of anyone that moves into town, it's new. Now, you know, you send them over there, they can get educated and get a new packet and it's really, really a great thing. The local landmarks program continues, that was established by resolution of the mayor and town council, the very last meeting of twenty twenty one. So the American Legion Post thirty four and the Cave Creek Museum have already been awarded their respective plaques. And there are several more coming that will hit in the new year. The foothills food bank in the town of Cave Creek entered into lease agreements to locate the new food bank pantry at forty second street and Carefree Highway. And that allows for the construction of a public works and utilities office in lab space of the town. So it's a great collaborative opportunity. The purchase and sale of a sale agreement of between Miracle County Parks Recreation and Desert Foothills Land Trust for the acquisition and preservation of. Thirty point six acres adjacent to Spur Cross Ranch Conservation Area just occurred. The town of Cave Creek and Miracle County each paid fifty percent of the cost to acquire the property. But the Desert Foothills Land Trust really worked hard to pull this together, took over two years of effort to. Work through the process and the intergovernmental agreement and solicit and select the qualified land appraiser and negotiate the terms and conditions of that. But that was another huge. Collaboration and very successful for the town and the county. We end this with the staff, most of the staff, not everyone was there that that helped make this happen from day to day. And then we are going to move into a. Video that should be queued up that highlights the town of Cave Creek that we recently had put together.
Your timing was good.
And that is twenty twenty two in a nutshell.
Well done, Karen.
Yes.
Are we hanging the video on the website?
The video will probably be in multiple locations, so the website will see if we can get that queued up to run at the tourism bureau and wherever we can promote our beautiful town.
You might send it to Arizona highways too, because they always like to do specials like that.
The public comment. I guess we're looking for a motion adjourned.
Jeremy, please, motion to adjourn.
Thank you.